All right, seven o'clock, let's call this the order. Start with the pledge of allegiance. Would you like to read that for me, please?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just for all.
Anybody that's had a chance to review the agenda will know it's rather light for tonight. Uh, we will start with consent agenda. The agenda for tonight as well as approval for the meeting minutes from last meeting, which is June 18th, 2024. Anybody have any, uh, any updates or changes that need to be made to tonight's agenda or the meeting minutes from last meeting? Okay, motion to approve the agenda and meeting minutes from June 18th.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, consent agenda for July 16th, 2024, and the meeting minutes of June 18th, 2024.
A second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. As you can see, we have no unfinished business. We wrapped up most of that last month. We have no new business at this time. Um, so we will open, uh, the first part of tonight's meeting for citizen comments. Anybody that would address, would like to address the planning commission on any business other than that of the five-year master plan? Everybody? Nick says I got none?
Yeah, nothing.
Okay. Uh, close citizen comments. The next part of tonight's meeting is the master plan five-year update. Uh, we talked about this a little bit last month and it looks like we have another packet here from Mr. Casson and Karen, was Karen? Sorry, I don't remember. Love me, love her? Love beer? Please.
Good evening.
Could you?
Uh, you, what we have before you is just a, pretty much what you had last month, updated a little bit. There's been some changes to fixtures. Like I indicated to you, I added a, uh, on page, uh, thirty-four, there's a map, county highway map that shows the road right away. So that results in the future. Uh, on page fifteen, I added reference to the county master plan. Page fourteen, reference to land assistance surrounding communities. Demographics were all double-checked and most of the, uh, the narrative has been checked for grammar. There may still be a spelling error, grammar error. But we're at the point now that we need to open this up for public review. Uh, and what it takes is that planning commission is to pass a motion asking the township board to authorize this distribution of this plan to surrounding communities and to the county and to utilities. So that's done in a form of a letter that I have prepared that Jennifer Anderson, the court, will send out. But first step will be for you to authorize the, ask the township board to authorize a distribution and it will be the sixty-three day review period. The board would then pass that motion and then the sixty-three day review period would start. We'd have this on the website and solicit comments around communities, surrounding communities. Anybody who wants to look at it would solicit, give us comments. Then we convene back in two months, review those comments, make any changes that we find necessary, schedule a public hearing and adopt the master plan. That's our process right now. So we're, we're getting to the tail end of this. This is ninety-nine percent completed. There may be some citizens who want some changes in that, but we will discuss that then. Or the planning commission may feel, or the board may feel after the sixty-three day review period that there's some things they'd like changed. So I do have a motion that I've, that I guess, that if you decide you want to send this to the board, that would be the motion.
Excellent.
Could I ask a question or just make a statement? Uh, I'm not sure what the timeframe is, but as of now, we have no interactive website. And then Joe has been in contact as well, Katie, our point person, with the people who are formulating and finalizing the website. So I don't know if your sixty-three day period may be impacted if we do not have an interactive website.
There's no way you could put this on the website at all?
No, and I, do you have a timeframe, Joe? You've been in touch with the people?
I have, okay, I have, I have talked to them.
Well, maybe tomorrow Katie can try to pinpoint something specific and, and express the importance of.
When would the board be meeting?
Uh, their next meeting would be.
It's in August, the second.
The second Tuesday of August.
Okay, so that would be when the sixty-three day, that's when we would want to get at least a copy of this in the, on the website.
So you put something, you have the calendar on the phone?
I do.
You check to one of that second.
Who's doing the website?
Schumacher.
Schumacher Technologies, they've done a lot of township, uh, websites.
Four days is August fifteenth. Is there a way you could add a link to it? Third, the second Thursday?
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday, it would be in the, uh, thirteen, August thirteenth.
So if there's any way they could at least put this out there?
That's ZBA is August.
Maybe that's a good, maybe that's a good question. You know, we tell them we need a website by this date because of this.
It's pretty simple task to just look at the, uh, website.
So what's, what's the issue with the website? It's not live, like you can't get onto it or you just can't?
We have had to hire a whole web master.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I remember that whole process.
And I think when they made their presentation to the board, they said it might take three months to get it out.
Three to four months.
And we're probably into the near end of the three months. Like I said, Katie has been our point person.
Yeah.
But they, they built basically, what they sent us so far is sort of like a Facebook, I mean, a homepage. And they're building what they call the, the framework of it, so.
So what I would propose, uh, as the planning commission, if we're ready to make this motion and send it to the board, we'll do so. And if at the time the board meets, the website is still not able to post, then the board can choose to, to postpone starting that.
Release of the funding.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, furthermore, we've had this, my fellow commissioners, we've had this for a month now. Has anybody had, you know, dug into this deep? Had any feedback for either Steve or Karen on, on this and want to make any other, this last minute changes before we are ready to, to make a motion on this?
I had a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, one of the items we talked about, I think at the last meeting, was concerning our white oak, uh, woodlands. On page thirty-two, I thought where it might be, and maybe it's there, Steve and Karen, and I'm just not picking it up. But I thought maybe we were going to make reference to that because it was a, and again, we don't have, maybe do it now, but I just think it's important, um, just because we talk about it a lot, Steve, here. And then I'm the one who always, okay, where is that? And I'm taking everybody back, uh, but I, I think it's something that we should know.
You're right.
Okay. The other thing was, and Steve, you and Karen concerning zoning of, oh gosh, county line and Springborn Road, page sixty-one. And if, I'm looking at this as a master plan, after the B2 zoning, we are delegating that as, um, okay. And that was the area where we have the, uh.
We talked about this little parcel right here.
Very little parcel right there.
Yep.
Between Springborn Road and, and our B2 zoning. And I think we've got it right here, uh, but I just wanted to check with you, Steve. Is that what we were up to? We were taking that piece of property and, and.
This was the ag, north of the red area?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't have the, but, yeah.
Yes.
So that's what we're seeing and that's what we're looking at, right?
This is the zoning, you can drop them up and down. We need to go to the master plan map or the future land use map. Is that not what you want? We show them the future land use map commercial all the way to the freeway.
Which, which page are we, Steve? Fifty.
They do not have any colors, do they?
Okay.
Just to try to be cost effective until. That, that would be right, right north of, of East Two, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought. I thought we were between the B2, what is, uh, the last piece of property there.
Switch the land use.
Right, right. I thought we were going to get that back.
No, that's my mistake, man. I thought we were.
Oh, I, that's why I asked.
But it is, but it is that way on page sixty-one.
That's the zoning map. That's the current.
The current on that, correct.
And this is what we anticipate the future.
Okay.
Wait, we're turning back into what, ag closure?
Yeah.
Well, you had, when you got the.
It's ag now. And we had, one time we had talked about extending the business district all the way to the freeway. And then we talked about maybe not doing that. And so that's kind of where we're at.
And we still got business in between there.
In between where? We're talking about south, south of Springborn. You're talking about the little triangle that's by the trailer park, right? Yeah, no, that one, I think we're all agreed on that one.
Yeah. That's, that's like south of the, uh, the express.
That can be changed, I mean, as, for others of the planning commission.
I just thought it'd be less.
If you're passing, you're sending me this, um, so I can see the color.
I didn't do a color because it's seventy-two pages, there's a problem?
Oh, yeah.
I can send it to digital. Well, you would have got it digitally with color. So if you want to print it off.
Yeah, because that whole area, that whole area is.
Pretty orange hands before the. So.
Yeah, okay.
So it would stay away that way.
Remind me, what's, what's your concern with that being the B2 all the way to the, to the freeway?
I'm going to ask Steve to jump in on that.
Steve, can you hear that question?
Well, we have, we have the B2 right next to Interstate ninety-four. We had an issue with that, correct? Because of the B2, the business was right next to ninety-four. I'm trying to remember what you told us.
I indicated that. No, I remember that discussion with the trucking company?
Yeah, yeah, that's where it basically come up. And we got into a, um, I'm trying to remember who said, geez.
Well, I didn't think there was office at that time. The old office.
Yes, okay, that's what it was, it was office.
And I said, you'd be hard pressed to tell a judge that you hold him off to office because there's no demand for office.
There we go.
Yeah. But B2 is similar to what Ponce de Oros.
That's true.
So it's just moving that up, but you want to keep it ag, that's a change. We don't have to make that decision tonight, just we can ask for public input too and see what they say.
I like that. See, and here's, here's my thought on that is, I think, I think including it in some type of business or industrial district makes more sense than ag because that's the piece of property that everyone is going to come in here and petition us to, for a special land use or rezoning. That's going to be the, you know, that's, that's prime real estate for this township. You know, we, it could be a, a great opportunity for a business to move in there and generate tax versus leaving it as ag and, and constantly having to fight with people to tell them, no, they can't put a business in there.
But it's going to have to be the right business that comes in with that area. Which kind of goes hand in hand with, like, the last two months that I wasn't here, I went on a Michigan farm tour. And then I proceeded to go on a Tennessee agricultural farm tour. And they focused on a lot of different types, predominantly what I do, agritourism, but a lot of other. And they taught, they had somewhere, they were talking about smaller townships and areas that want to stay rural, but you have development moving in, like we have twenty-six. And you have residents that, we don't want it, we don't want it, we don't want it, we want to stay rural. But then they also, when somebody comes in with a creative farming aspect, they also kind of don't want that. And there are a lot of young people out there that have phenomenal new technological ways of farming that are way different. Like they're growing apple trees that you would have grown on a huge acreage. And they're putting two hundred apple trees on very small acreage. And they're doing a lot of creative things. And to stay rural and to stay the way that people want it, I mean, you kind of need to be open more to different ideas within agriculture. And maybe look for ideas like that. I mean, hydroponics, how they're growing tomatoes and stuff now in some of these places where they can grow so many tomatoes all year round and provide fresh produce. And being right on the outskirts of the metropolitan area, we're crying for that. Instead of having to have a factory or, you know, we can still do agricultural things. I don't know what they may be, but these kids that come to these things and talk about what they're doing and stuff, you're just like, wow. I mean, you go into these agricultural, they're just tomatoes in this, and it's really kind of interesting. But I think we should, as township, I, I would like to see us focus on a lot of that because younger kids cannot buy these pieces of property. Can't buy a million dollar piece of property just to have a house on it. You know, a lot of them want to come up with some new farming. I mean, they want to be farmers too, and they want to find a way to farm, but they can't buy fifteen hundred acres. So they're looking for their little niche in the farming world.
Makes a lot of sense.
There's some creative stuff.
Very cool. So, I mean, if we don't have to make a decision on this right now, we can wait till we get public input. And I mean, it is part of the future land use, so it's something that we can continue to ponder and I'm good with that.
Yeah, and the other thing, um, Steve, Karen, and this is a task that is probably tough to do. But one of the things that concerned me was when we were putting the gas station in at, uh, twenty-six, Walther. Went through a lot, I thought it turned out very well. Uh, what concerned me and what, which I didn't feel like did a real good job in that respect was all at once I found out we had a roundabout at the interstate. And it, it just concerns me if people coming into our township, they want to spend the money, they want to do it the right way, which is, they did. I think that's, you know, it's, it's great what we've got. And I, Steve, do you have any, any input on that? You've worked with these road commissions before. Is there a way at least to get some preliminary drawings, if you will, on roundabouts for a township or us or anyone? Really?
The supervisor actually said, I need to go down.
Yeah, I, I got some preliminary plans. That shows that, uh, for a fact, the one that neighbors behind Red Park, I took it down because they were concerned last summer. They put some, sprayed some terrain marks there just, just for some preliminary engineering, they're concerned. So, um, I showed them that it's not going to interfere with their way whatsoever. And they shipped it over to the, why I got postponing here, they had to shift it to the Hyrum Township side. So I had to go through the, the condemned land on that side. Because the old gas tanks here at the gas station.
Oh, yeah.
There was, it could have, they should store the cost of that. So they figured it's cheaper to shift the road to the south. Yeah. So, because that location is where the gas station for multi, um, decades.
Do you have some preliminary, other intersections in the township that you have received? Preliminary type drawings?
Just that one.
Just that?
Yeah, you can do the grass it rebuild, but that's just a rebuild of the crash. So it just, it just might be something we can't do. Yeah, I don't know. But it just seemed to me, you know, if we could come up with something for our plan, then we have some discussions with, with the county road commission.
We can't do anything with this plan that they say so the county can do.
I understand that.
But, you know, the, certainly keep communication channels open.
What about the other place with a gentleman who wanted to run for Richmond City Council? Had been a former member, wanted to do, well, he'd served on as a state rep. He wants to do a roundabout right here at Crashet County Line. But they were saying that's not very, it's just, because all the accidents had those two road to dark.
That would be so.
Actually, the road commission says to make that safer, that little, between county line and Crashet, if you want to go up Montville Lane, if they would take that out, that would make that intersection far more.
Where the bank is.
Yeah, well, yeah, right there.
The other side where, where it cuts that little triangle off, like when you cross straight over.
Right, right.
Yeah, if they remove that, that would make that intersection.
How does, how do you make that left turn when you're going backwards?
What's that?
To make that left turn?
No, you won't.
When you come up county line, go back down.
Well, then they'd force you, they'd, it would, it would turn it into a, a forced no left turn. Your right turn only, you'd have to turn left.
Lights again then.
You'd have to turn left at the intersection of thirty-one. You have to turn left there and then right at, at the, at the, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't agree.
I mean, if they can cancel, if they can stop the trash trucks from going down there, save a whole bunch. That's where all the issues come in, so.
And also we have a framework, second effect, well, next township, the city of Richmond has given approval for a three-story height, um, apartment complex behind the gas station crematorium. And there's a easement between the gas station crematorium where they would dump out onto Crashet there.
That's Casco's.
Casco, absolutely. Road commission didn't know that until I told them.
Oh, really? Really?
Yeah, you. That, that seems to be, I gotta call your counterparts in the city of Richmond, so.
The only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, I'll, um, the, one thing that caught my eye is I'm fortunate, unfortunate, getting a housing for the age. You have any thoughts on that as far as, is there something we should be putting in here to, to maybe help that situation?
Well, I can tell you, we're right between two major senior assisted living complexes being built right now. One at twenty-four and on their plane, and one in downtown St. Clair and County Street.
So. I mean, we're going to see, um, probably more and more storage. You know, people, it's a, it's a great investment. If we were all smart today, we'd probably throw in a few thousand bucks, we'd all be rich. But besides that, um, is it something, Steve, that we can, we can look at a little more? I know at the end we had, you know, that's one of the things that you're suggesting, obviously. Uh, that, that will be up to John, how that's handled at the very end of this. How you're going to bring this up to the planning commission so it's kind of fresh? And it, it gets, and maybe it's something, John, that you do every year, you know, or one of those same there suggestions are pretty good. But just, just a thought of where are we going with that? And then my favorite property by the, uh, Ravina and, uh, between that development and Interstate ninety-four, that dead piece of property. It's just, um, it's something, it's a dead piece of property that, that's hard to develop. And just because of the current location, a twenty-seven mile road, you got a lot of things happening. There has to be some, some real thought process with the owners. But I just throw this out, it's the last time we're going to, about that property. And is there something else, Steve, that we should maybe look at for that particular piece?
Well, there is an action strategy, master plan, page sixty-three, that says that, uh, over the next three years, the planning commission is going to have encouraging, you know, senior housing options within the township for all residential stations in place, senior property, that strategy, uh, or policy. And then what we're going to do is you work with your planner over the next few years and develop an action like that.
Do we know? Do you know what, that piece of property?
They do, I, I believe they.
What, the triangle?
Yeah, the property.
Yeah, I remember he came in when he wanted to.
I think it's my last one.
That's, yeah, I don't want to say that, yeah.
Bill Morts is the one.
Mr. Salem.
Well, they sell it tomorrow if they can get a decent price.
Right, and I think they've approached the township about the use. And I don't understand it yet, but I just.
Well, they came to us the one time asking if they could do RV and boat storage, but they wanted to do that in the parking lot of the old party store.
Right.
And that's why they fenced it and they brought in all the asphalt millings and redid, turned the whole grass area into a parking lot.
I don't know if that's my neighbor. My neighbor owns the triangle. Is it seven acres? Is that what we're talking about?
South of the trailer park.
Seven acres.
I understand.
Yeah, no, the trailer park came in, when they came in, they came in asking about the park. Oh, I thought Keith said that the, the trailer park. That's what I.
No, triangle.
Okay.
Were you, I'm not sure if you're on the, the commission yet, Keith, but we had a couple property owners that came in there. I don't know if, because there's two pieces of property. There's a southern part that's more triangular and then a northern part that's more rectangular.
Right.
Oh, they own it all.
Okay.
And this is nothing to do with the trailer park.
They will, they will estate.
I don't know what they.
No, it's for a long time.
It's been several years.
Yeah. But I think, I, I don't remember that.
But your landlord is not part of.
But I never could understand it. We're up there.
Oh, they came in, didn't we?
We don't believe that.
I remember asking, it was Steve, I said, is there property of a blood sample? Who was zoned with good intention and how, how things transpire, they end up the, kind of that piece of property. He said, oh, yeah.
Did you have something?
Is that property zoned? Can you put like a camper storage on there? Or that triangle piece? I, when it first came for sale, I thought of buying it. Because I wanted to put that there and build it. But I didn't, I didn't know anyway. It was sold before I could even.
Yeah.
I think so, not here.
Yeah.
They would want to put storage or fourth level.
Be a perfect little spot for storage.
I mean, I don't think if anybody came to the board, bought it or came to the board and requested to consider a rezoning if they had a good plan and it made sense and, you know, traffic and all that kind of stuff, I don't think the board would be too opposed to it. We would like to see something happen to it. And if that meant considering a rezoning to make it happen for somebody, a developer or somebody with some money in their pocket, I mean, I'm sure we'd.
The trailer park has never been interested?
Oh, they were.
The ones who were pushing it.
Yeah. That was originally built, they wanted to buy it all the way up to the freeway. The people who owned their kind didn't want to sell out. There's a.
It just would seem like the most logical.
Yeah, there's a.
They would have I ninety-four coverage and.
Yeah, I mean, those are both sections of property. There's a farmhouse that, I think they tore it down maybe about twenty-five years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you have to do something special, put the boards up on that property? Is that, it's perfectly for Gilmore.
I would, I'd have to.
And then you could make a rental income monthly.
I just don't need to ask.
All right, well, I, I think, I think we've, we've kind of, uh, gone through this and, you know, obviously, this is our.
Good start.
This is a good start and I, I really appreciate, uh, Steve and Karen, all the work you guys have put into this. I think we go ahead and, and make a motion to refer it to the board and, um, follow the plan that Mr. Casson laid out.
I'm a question. It's a motion to receive and file the draft master plan to request the township board to begin to require sixty-three day public review period and authorize the distribution of the draft plan to adjacent communities, utilities, and St. Clair County Metropolitan Plank.
Oh, second one.
Right there now.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Karen. Um, the next thing that we have on the agenda is commission comments. Um, I'll, I'll open this up to the rest of the board and then I'll pause it because I do have some comments I'd like to wrap up with. Do you have anything?
No, the board didn't really. We had nothing going. We get something next time. I want to put it right in the board now.
Do you have, everything's fine with me. Do you have anything from the board?
Yeah. I only have one question. If somebody comes with plans, and I know we switched to thirty days, which makes sense. If there's a small change and the board chose to let them, can we shorten that time period?
Thirty days only applies to their submitted before they can get to a meeting. If they're already at a meeting.
And then we reject something and they have to come back. Let's say it's something not major. It's thirty days the second time around too?
That hasn't, because it's gone.
Okay, for me, I just wasn't sure about that. I thought it was.
The day after the meeting, they have to wait.
Sometimes we approve a plant contingent upon the, uh, we just have a panel again, the third drug.
Okay.
And then it's fine. Approve them.
So like when Purge Point came out for their parking lot, they could have come back quicker. It wasn't like they had to wait thirty days. That was only.
It was one separate from the building, yeah.
I get it, I just thought maybe they had to wait a whole lot of thirty. I'm like, God, you'll never get anything done, did you get it that way? Because your summer's over.
Because your summer's over. So I'm going to write this.
Plain approved contingent upon planner review.
So that's what, so that's, that's what I wanted to bring up tonight is, is the plan approval and then what happens thereafter. I think recently we've run into some issues with site plans that have been approved, and the petitioners aren't really so sure as to what that process is afterwards, before they can actually break ground, put a shovel on the ground, start their plan. First Point's a, a perfect example of this. We approved their parking lot project contingent on the notes from Mr. Monte and PCE and the engineering related request that, that he had set forth. And so our approval was contingent on them completing that and, you know, providing a detailed engineering plan for grading and drainage. They did not provide that, they also did not follow through on getting their, their building permit, and they broke ground and started to construct their parking lot. Now, Mr. Susan, the building department has addressed that, they have stopped moving forward, which is what we asked them to do. But as a commission, we need to make sure that it's very clear that the petitioners, once they get an approval from us, understand that there are, I thought, items that need to be addressed in the process of them obtaining their building permit before they move forward. Our, our site plan approval is not a green light for them to, to break ground. They still need to get a building permit, they still need to do what we ask to obtain that building permit.
But don't we have in that form, that we have that checklist that, and once they got that, it's a sign off thing, then they can start?
Well, the only issue, and John just mentioned, I believe it was mentioned in your last meeting, but it was not put forth in the minutes. You approved it based on the planner's review, Mr. Monte's office. If you could hand those out.
Yep.
The day that I get the approvals from our professionals, Karen and Mr. Monte, what you have in front of you and what Karen submits to me is immediately emailed, not only to the applicant, but their professionals as well. When Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Armstrong sat, stood at the podium, he acknowledged to me that he had received what you had in front of him. We, they didn't, they didn't provide our office or Mr. Monte's office with any of those specifications. And they began, we got a call from Mr. Armstrong wanting to know if he could schedule his inspection. And I said, you haven't, you don't have a permit. And then Mr. Broso, the contractor, calls and he's ready, he's calling Roland on the cell phone, he's ready. And I touched base with the representative from Mr. Monte's office, she had not received it. She said that she specifically spoke with Mr. Whitaker well before what happened and let him know that they require specific engineering and drainage.
Well, and let's be clear here, Brenda, even if she had received it, and even if they had provided Mr. Monte's office with this engineering plan, they still have not applied for a building permit.
My goodness, who, a Porsche guy does not know he has to go before he starts.
Didn't he have drainage?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, right.
And, you know. When they come in with, with their ruling for mid-application, I have the approval by the planner, so that's all good. But when I have a sheet from, as you have in front of you, I say I need drainage plans, and I need the engineering plans approved by Mr. Monte's office and approval by either the drain commission or the road commission, whichever is involved. And if they don't bring those to me, we can't proceed, and then they're mad.
So as a township, we do offer as part of the process from going from site plan review to site plan approval to building permit issuance, there is a step in the process in between there, after approval, but before a permit is issued, there is a, an opportunity for the petitioner to schedule a meeting with the representative of the planning commission, the building department, whoever else, to go through all of the required documentation to be issued a permit. Now, it's not required, but if they don't know or they've never gone through the process before, it's highly advised that, that they take that opportunity to schedule a meeting with us and understand one of those requirements before they, they even bother applying for the permit. Now, if they don't do that, then they're, and they come before Brenda asking for a permit with their building application, and they don't have all the required documents, well, sorry, you're wasting your own time because you didn't take opportunity that we provided to you.
Yeah, and I think, you know, with Keith and building that land and making the list and all that stuff.
We haven't had any problems.
No, it's.
Up until these.
It's worth, and so these guys, I mean, this is a, more of a one-off, and somebody's jumping the gun and doing whatever. But, I mean, there's a lot of mistakes going on right there, especially with this trucks we have.
Yep. And, and, I mean, we don't want to force people to do it. I mean, you're going to, you know, as we continue to, to grow as a community, we're going to get developers that, that get into a rhythm and do several projects here in the township, and they're going to know the process. They're going to know that they get their planning commission approval, and then they got to do this and this, and then they get, those types of folks may not need to schedule that meeting in between because they're going to know the process. But people that don't know, or people that it's their first time through, I just, you know, as a, as a commission and as the chairperson, it's important that we remind folks, hey, if you're unsure of the next steps before you're, you're applying for your building permit, please take the opportunity, schedule a meeting with us, we'd be happy to sit down with you, outline the requirements for you to get your building permit issued. And if they, if they, if they, if they ignore the opportunity, well, then that's on them.
So that checklist has a sign off by you, right? So when that, when that checklist is actually approved here, and you meet with them and everything's signed off, you should be the one saying, here's the next, next step for you.
Right.
And if they jump that gun, you can't help that.
And that, and that was the original concept. It would be at the planner's take spot and at the chairperson's spot. The only difficulty we had was you're in the midst of a meeting.
Right.
As soon as they hear what they want to hear, they're out of here. They don't stick around to sign anything, to talk to you, they just hear the planning commission as approved, that's it.
Right.
Um, so I'm hoping that perhaps you might consider, when you approve a site plan, your planner is recommended, but you have a report in front of you such as that from PCE, because Karen and I have spoken of this. She can't address the engineering aspect.
Right.
She can't comment on what you have in front of you. That your approval is, you are approved, but, and I'll have copies of that, you need to do this before you approach the building. Here's a shorter copy.
As, as the voice of the board, I'll, I'll take it upon myself to say, okay, we make our vote, if it's passed, I'll just politely say to the, to the petitioner, your site plan has been approved, please note that it's contingent on these requirements from our engineers, and these will be required before you are issued a building permit. And if they walk, if they walk out of here and they still don't get it, there's not much more you can do.
Yeah, and it's, it will be a part of the record then.
Correct.
So if they retort or get mad, I will highlight, here it is.
Without getting added, they're the ones that jump. Exactly, they know that.
Yeah, and that happens, I, I mean, I, like, we're, you and I, Brenda, we talked about this. I pull permits, lots of permits in lots of different communities. There's lots of times where I go to a community and I go to pull a permit and I don't have the paperwork needed. That's on me for not doing my research before I got there to understand what I'm going to need, because every community's different. And, and that, I mean, that's as simple as just pulling a permit to do a driveway. You know, there's no site plan required, it's just, this is what I want to do, but some are going to require, you know, a diagram of where you're going to put a silt fence or soil erosion and grading. There's a lot of different requirements, and it just, it's all case dependent on where you're doing the work. So. That's everything I had for commission comments. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Stevens, are you on your side?
Uh, no, it's, you know, it seemed like it's all well and nice, but I like doing that action points there. It'll have some good points for us to work on, like stuff like eight-year setbacks, stuff like a master, I mean, a capital improvement plan, I'd like you, the planning commission to work on and stuff like that. Yeah, and that idea, some of the concepts about aging in place, there's some different ways that, if it's cut before the planning commission before, maybe it's time to revisit it, and then take a look at it. Especially when it comes to, you have them, like, the mother-in-law houses and stuff like that. If we do something again, I'd caution the planning commission, we have very strict about it.
Oh, actually, just thought of one other thing I wanted to bring. We, I was a part of a meeting with a potential commissioner, petitioner for an upcoming site plan, we'll probably see, I would think, next month, September. But part of the conversation during that pre-planning meeting was around, don't kill me, Nick, hoop buildings.
Hoop buildings.
Um, this particular petitioner is, is, has contracted with a hoop building manufacturer who has designed and engineered a hoop structure that is mounted to your standard steel Connex shipping containers. Now, our ordinance specifically states that shipping containers are not prohibited in any district, but part of that conversation was maybe the planning commission wants to revisit the use or, you know, allow, whether or not it may be allowed to have or use shipping containers in the industrial district where they kind of fit a purpose. I, I agree strongly with the ordinance that we don't want shipping containers in ag or residential areas, but the industrial areas and, to your point, younger, more creative people that are looking at different ways to be cost-effective and resourceful, you know, it's, I think maybe it's a conversation that as a, as a planning commission, we could revisit.
You mean houses, I don't know.
They made some phenomenal houses.
Houses, buildings, I mean, there's, there's a Taco Bell at twenty-three and Van Dyke, you would think twenty-three and Van Dyke, like, boy, do you, shall we, but they got a, a, a shipping container-built Taco Bell. And it's, it's really pretty, and, you know, and.
My thought on it is with the way the situation's going with how much everything costs, if shipping containers are gun wrecked, it's a great storage option for people, and it's way cheaper than building a whole barn.
And you get back into play then, what looks like play and what isn't play. There's a, there's a big line on what's play.
Yes.
Somebody can make a shipping container look amazing, and they shouldn't be faulted for the person who decides to put a rusty old shipping container, leave it there for thirty years. You know what I mean, that shouldn't be the fault. Development should not be a fault because of the people that choose to not.
The container that changed the world.
Uh, Steve, do you have any input on that from other?
I was just telling Karen about this development for here in township, I'll send you a copy.
Excellent, thank you.
How about like barn dominions, are they allowed in Casco? I saw that question recently somewhere. Oh, nobody asks about it, or is it?
Yeah, I got a call today, Roland, it's on.
I saw, only because I probably saw it somewhere, that's why I'm asking.
Well, they, they ask that question on Facebook, and if like people like call the freaking township, we call when nobody answers. Well, if you call it for three blocks, nobody's going to answer.
If they ask you because you're on the planning, I think we should at least have like, I'd like to have a logical, they are, I didn't even hope they were allowed, I'm like, I don't know. Don't try and limit your shipping containers.
I mean, it's, it's, as long as it's all applicable building code. There's no reason why you can't finish the inside of it, right?
A lot of time?
Well, I find, when I talk to these people, by the time they do the research out, they're better off to go straight.
Everybody thinks that they're going to build a barn dominium because it's going to be so cheap. Half the, half the time, what they can afford in a fifteen-hundred square foot house, they think, well, I'm going to build a barn dominium, so I'm going to make it five thousand square feet, because it's a barn dominium, so I can afford it, and it's going to be the same as a stick-built fifteen-hundred square foot, and all of a sudden, they're half a million dollars in their building.
I can tell you what a big, I can tell you what a big empty barn costs. And it doesn't even have a good floor insulation, let me tell you, it's empty. There's no bed, ain't sleeping in there.
Some townships want them to look symmetrical with the denture, too. They don't want just a bull barn stuck there and made into a house, they want.
Want to keep a look of all.
I had a call today, it's on.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else before we wrap this thing up? You can, uh, motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion.
I can do that.
I'm making a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, motion?
Second.
It is seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.